Good evening. Today is our second public hearing for the FY twenty four physical year budget. Copies of the budget are available on the website along with our budget presentation and our fee schedules. Immediately following this public hearing, I will move into our regular meeting. During the regular meeting, we'll have our final vote on the FY twenty four budget. With that, we're going to ask Melissa, our finance director, to come up and give us an update on what we learned about last week or wait for this.
And so just to recap from our previous presentation, the first full hearing, everyone proposed that our general funds, thirty eight million, eight hundred thirty four thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine dollars. With the total budget of seventy five million, eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. And these totals have not changed since the last committee. But I did want to go over a couple of things because we had a presentation at the previous public hearing. And some of the numbers within the budget changed, even though the total did change. So if you're looking at it by department or by expenditure classification, it shifted slightly. And so it's property in my local budget, we made a change to after receiving more information. I think the increase fifty nine thousand, one hundred and thirty seven dollars. And we have all said this by decrease in what was budgeted for general plan to make sure that some of the other ones are the same. In addition, we have created four new deputy sheriff positions and we are shifting two of those positions over to communication officers. And then outside of the numbers, changes to the fee schedules arose due to a potential patient of the approval of the joint use program. Should that be approved, we would like to take away the school use fees, charge for programs that are included in the original fee schedule. Also, a couple of additional changes under part creations, the part related to keeping adult minutes programs, these four. So the revised FY twenty four and unrecommended budget summary sheet that was posted on the website as well as a revised fee schedule. Those have both been revised, placed on the website on bulletin board for the evening. And hopefully everyone has received that, so we'll get rid. So I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to the budget in general or any of the changes. The request for budget adoption will be that you consider these budget numbers in the doctor resolution after proposed FY twenty four budget. As presented for the general plan and home budget and then for the fee schedule as revised.
Any questions on Melissa on those changes or anything?
She answered mine.
Okay, very good. All right, this time we'll open up any public comment on the budget presentation. Anyone virtually? Okay, thank you. Kyle, any public, anybody? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close our public hearing on the budget and move into our regular meeting. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the sixth, twenty twenty three. If you're going to join us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin to lead us in the pledge of the flag. Please stand. Thank you.
A point led by the United States of America and to everyone. One nation under God, in the midst of war, with the other two.
First time a business to be to approve the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It was a motion second to prove the agenda all in favor.
Ah.
Thank you, motion carries. Next time, is any statements or remarks from citizens for anything not on the agenda tonight? Anyone virtually? Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
I do have one. Regardless of why we're here tonight, whatever the issue might be, I would hope that all of you remember what today is. It was D-Day, Normandy, and you know, I think about what those young men went through, I can't even fathom. Those doors were open on those landing craft and had to make it across that beach with horrendous fire coming from German positions. And you got to think, most of those guys are just out of high school. And truly the greatest generation, you know, whether they landed or they were dropped in the night before to secure bridges where they came in by gliders. I don't, I can't imagine the brave. They will never receive truly what they deserve for what they've done for this country. So regardless of why we're here, always remember that because we're losing a lot of them every day. And some of you may have relatives who were there. My dad got there in the occupation force late later, but you know, just what they had to endure. Most of them has probably never gone more than forty, fifty miles from their home. And their first visit to Europe was out of landing craft and jumped out of the plane. So just for a moment, thank you.
A couple of quick announcements. Kipo County Beautiful Commissioner recently received the twenty twenty two Governor's Circle Award. So congratulations to Kipo County Beautiful. Also, the board commissioners will host a town hall meeting on Thursday, June the fifteenth. That'll start at six P M. At the O'Conne County Civic Center. You can attend in person or virtually via Zoom. You can check the website for that connection. All right, so I got a little ahead of myself on the hearing there. We were supposed to vote on the budget in that time, so.
I was looking forward on the agenda.
I was. A lot of people came just to see that, so.
Yeah.
If we could, if there's no questions or comments on there, if we can entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
Make a motion to approve the budget as submitted.
Second. Your motion is second to adopt the budget and fee schedule as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is the approval of the minutes. This is for May second and May twenty third.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Second.
Get a motion second all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is the Joint Comprehensive Plan Update. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have for you this evening, the adoption of the O'Conne County Joint Comprehensive Plan Update, including the cities of Bishop, Bogart, North High Shoals and Watkinsville. The cities will be adopting their portion of the plan later or this week during their respective council meetings. As you recall, we started this process about a year ago now, in June of twenty twenty two. With our town hall kickoff and our community survey, which we received over fourteen hundred responses to a very good response. That was a lot of good input. We also had a kickoff meeting, a public hearing in July, the visiting workshops, which were through eleven focus groups through September and October. And then, of course, we had our public workshops, which were future land use charrette in December, in-person open house in March, and the virtual open house that we held from March twenty ninth to April twentieth, a month-long open house virtually. And then we had our draft public hearing, April twenty fifth, with the transmittal to D C A and the Regional Commission for Review in May. And then now it's back to you with their approval for your adoption. So since the final public hearing on the plan was held on April twenty fifth and the D C A, Department of Community Affairs and Regional Commission have both reviewed and approved the plan update. The final action required of the board is to adopt the comprehensive plan update and authorize chairman to sign the adopting resolution. Thank you.
Any questions, a guy on there? Do we have any public comment on this? Anyone virtually? Then it's appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan update.
Make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan update. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we're going to move into our zoning matters. The reason petition shall be presented by the staff, county staff with no time limit. The applicants and those signing up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes, less the applicant's reserve for reserve time for rebuttal. Those signed up to speak against the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes. The public comments shall then be closed and the board may ask questions as they deem appropriate. And then the board shall take action as set out in Unified Development Code. With that, we'll call our first reason, which is P twenty two dash zero two nine four. Life Mark Development LLC rezoning from R one to O V P, six acres on Julian Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty two zero two nine four, Life Mark Development LLC, located at the corner of Julian and Mars Hill. Parcel B zero two one zero nine A A. It's currently zoned R one in the regional center character area. And again, the request is rezoned from R one to O V P zoning for an office with warehouse development along Julian Drive and Mars Hill Road. This is the concept plan you have in your application package showing the the two office buildings up front with the warehouse building to the rear. It's a lot of larger direction. These are the architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Number four, the proposed building shall have facades of brick and stone. Number five, the office buildings, the office building shall have pitched hip roofs. And number six, propeller works department review and ADA ramp must be provided the intersection of Mars Hill Road and Julian Drive for future sidewalk extension across Julian Drive. And the planning commission recommends approval with the same conditions. Like.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Brian Kimzy with Carter Engineering. Can you my address or not?
No.
I'm the agent for Mr. Chad Milner, who owns, currently owns a property. And just to go into a little bit more detail about the type of business he has. The images you saw is a current business in Lawrenceville that he is moving to that spot. It's a print shop. It has some warehouse storage for the print materials. So that's, that's the warehouse component of it is the stored interior for the print shop itself. There's room on the property for the two office buildings, so he would like to have that fronting Mars Hill Road as well. We plan for stormwater. There's an existing pond on the back corner, eastern, northeastern corner of the property where we're planning to use for stormwater management. And we'll meet the current, current county regulations and plans. There is currently no sanitary sewer to the site, so it'll all be on-site septic system for this facility. The current business he has in Lawrenceville has less than twenty employees. He intends to have the same number here for that, for that facility. The office, office buildings are both eleven thousand square feet. You know, could be two level, could be one level. And, and, and he didn't really know how, you know, how many employees is how, yeah, but it's office buildings. So that's pretty much the intent of what he's trying to do out there.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the reason? Anyone virtually? Mr. Horn?
So I'm Foy Horn. My father was a D-Day invader of France. Actually, there's a movie that shows our soldiers marching through London. And the British women run out and kiss them. He got kissed as he marched through. And he loved to tell the story, of course. And he didn't tell me a lot about the war, but he did go in, in a landing craft and nearly drowned because he wasn't a big tall fellow. But he said, I was smart. I sat next to two tall soldiers and they picked me up and drug me ashore. So I married to Marty Horn. We're both retired. She retired after twenty two years at U G A. I was a lawyer for fifty six years. Known misbehaved well. Last eighteen years, we lived in James Mill. Four children. We bought a house at thirty five ninety one Mars Hill Road with my daughter to live in with her daughter Sage, who is now four, three acres. Beautiful chickens in backyard. Hope that's not violating any. I don't see anything. I know no colors out there. So in, in the school year, if you're in the backyard, you can hear the children get mouth and bridge out and then we're still laughing. They talk. It's a great place to live. We want to keep it that way. Now, ah, but this was not quite mentioned, but adjoining this six acres is the Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints Church. Also across the street from the rezone is Athens Church of Christ. And there's the single family dwelling that was adjourned directly. So it's residential. Like to keep it that way. I know the planning commission denied the dentist, our denial request, saying it was residential where he wanted on Mars Hill Road to rezone for twenty four parking spaces. Why doesn't that also apply to this property that which they have addressed as being on Julian Drive, but it's really on Mars Hill Road right there? So I, I, I don't think it makes any sense. There was a comment in the paper at least that there would be no trucks going down Mars Hill Road because it's no no, no truck traffic through there. Well, Sheriff Hales got a lot to do. He's not going to be at Paulson. There's no sign from seventy eight down Mars Hill Road. Easy to fix. I understand that's an easy fix. There is one from the other end where it's not a race track, but there is. So I would say that there is one half mile between the racetrack, you know, Coney Bank at seventy eight. This is a half mile down to that roundabout. That's already zoned for office industrial and there's vacant land there. Why don't you just put this cleaning operation there? Sorry zone for that. Why are we encroaching down into the residential area of Mars Hill Road? That's what I've got to say. Used to be some signs around O'Conne County, Don Quinet, O'Conne County. Well, Don Quinet, O'Conne County, gotta bring in this painting operation here. Oh, bring it here. Put it out there in the industrial area. Plenty of places it could go. Now I do have one more story. Being a lawyer, we've always got stories. I joined Jennings Mill, one of the first to, to join. And it was like thirty five years ago. And Don Norris was a commissioner. I don't know if y'all old enough to remember Don Norris, probably not. But Don Norris was a friend of mine through the J C's and all kinds of things. And as you left then, the, it was a two-lane road and came over the hill where the flower will be and it was sort of dangerous, traffic going toward Atlanta. It wasn't three sixteen. And so I told Don Norris, I said, Commissioner, we need a red light right there. He looked at me and said, we got one red light in O'Conne County and downtown Watkinsville and that's one too many. If he were alive today, what would he? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against the reason requests? Anyone version? Like a rebuttal? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments for this reason. Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, could you put the picture back up showing? Chase. Just let me look here first on that.
Which slide would you like?
Where it shows the.
The aerial?
Aerial here.
Yes.
And before you, when you leave that, go to the zoning map. Property. Property. One of the churches.
One is zoned AG and the other is OIP.
Office park across the street.
That's right. Yes.
That's it.
It is.
That's all I can do. Don't sit down, guy. Go, go back to the site plan. Anytime I hear the word warehouse, you know, I have the vision of a warehouse. And one of the things is I thought was missing from this application, I thought, you know, usually I'm accustomed to seeing, you know, some prop rear side elevations of buildings. Well, now I understand the warehouse is the larger building. Where is the shipping and receiving that take place in that building?
More than likely, and you can ask the applicant, but I believe this is probably where the truck doors are.
If you had side elevation, I could have answered that question.
Right, but you can see where the, the parking lot runs into it. So more than likely, this is the truck location.
All right, now the photographs that he had the application picked at a building that located something.
I believe it's the existing building therein.
Okay, so, so. But since he put that in the application, is that what these builders want?
With our conditions, no, because with our conditions, the office will have to have hip roofs. Should the board approve our conditions and they'll have to be brick and stone. As well as the warehouse being brick and stone as well. No pitch, no hip roof on that one, based on our condition.
Now, I know that we have looked at rezones that had warehouses in an OIP or OBP zone. And outdoor storage is strictly prohibited. Is that correct?
It is allowed in OBP.
Or outdoor storage?
It is, but their plan does not show it. Therefore, it would be prohibited.
Because that was just my question about that. Now, this is not a question you can ask, answer, guy, but question came up about the truck route, you know, the milk food truck. And question that we cannot answer tonight is what's going to happen to Julian Drive on 316? It's, it's a not a very safe intersection today. And there's been accidents out there. But the current plan, Mr. Chairman, does it not call for a flower?
That, that was in the original documents. Now it's just showing undetermined.
Showing what?
Not determined.
Not determined?
Yes. So there's been some and but my understanding is they're investigating possibly an interchange there. I don't know if that will ever come to be since so close to seventy-eight, but.
Well, the only thing I could see that, that they did have, I could find was if there was any kind of type of construction, it wouldn't be until 2028.
Right.
So for the next five years, if, if something went there, we could access 316.
Right.
On Julian Drive. But after that, we don't know.
Don't know.
Now, the question that Mr. Horn had mentioned about the milk food trucks. I mean, we put the signs up there and it's, it's in our ordinance that it's not supposed to be in, but it's, it has to be enforced.
Right. And there is an exception in the truck route that we're making deliveries to that road. They would be able to access that road.
So if they were coming to or leaving, they could use Mars Hill Road, the entire stretch.
That's correct.
To the Hocon Connect. Do we know the applicant, can you address the size of trucks we're talking about?
And many of them? I should have done that when I was up here before. It's very, very rare that they have large 18-wheeler trucks come in. It's all small box trucks delivering the print materials, UPS, FedEx. A little bit larger than those trucks, but very rare does he have the size he's in currently in Lawrenceville. They don't have good access with trucks. And so they, they've made it work without them.
Mr. Kimzy, it looks like that the, that the ramp itself wouldn't even accommodate a truck.
It come into that. So the entrance is 28 feet wide. We can get in, into the side. It would come and back in. Is that what you're asking? There, there is room to get it in. It's tight, but it would, it would, that's why I'm saying we're, we're, it's we, he wanted to show it because occasionally they might have to have a large delivery drop off. Would it be a, a large printing apparatus that needs to get in there? They'll have to have some way to get it in or out. And so he wanted to show that. And then to answer your question about out, there's no outdoor storage plan. It's all indoor. And his facility has now, it is brick facade on the front side, but not the side. But this would be brick all sides. The look and feel of that, that pictures we showed, that's kind of what he wants the look and feel to be in this location. Cause that's what he's, that's what he's got there.
And I trips a day on the trucks. I, I know you cover the trucks. That is about having trips, trips a day. How many trucks are in and out?
Right now, the, the, the delivery trucks, a couple of trucks a day, small delivery trucks a day.
Let me ask you this, guy. Across the street where the OIP is, I think. Are there any, anything in there close to what we're talking about here?
The office spaces would be probably similar to the front office spaces, but not, but not the warehouse.
Is there anything else in that vicinity that matters?
From a warehouse standpoint, I think the other one we approved was on Jimmy Daniel. Recently, there was a warehouse there. Has not been built yet.
Thank you.
No, sir. No, no. Thank you. No, sir.
We still got that one half mile.
We're not, we're not allowed to take any more public comment. Sorry. Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion for rezone request P twenty-two dash zero two nine four.
I'll make a motion to approve rezone P twenty-two dash O two nine four as stated with the conditions.
Okay. Any second. Motion to dance for last one second.
Here like this and later that I'll make a motion to decline rezone P twenty-two dash zero two nine four.
We have a motion and a second to deny rezone request P twenty-two dash zero two nine four, Life Mart Development LLC rezoning from R one to OVP. Six acres with the don't matter about the conditions because we're denying. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of denial? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next rezone request is P twenty-two dash zero three one seven. This is Chambers Family Partnership LLP. It's rezoning from R two, R three to R one. It's eighteen point nine eight acres at ten thirty Chambers Court. Also, we're going to do all three together?
No, sir. We'll, we'll do this separately. All right. Thank you. All right. Your, your first case is P twenty-two zero three one seven Chambers Family Partnership LLP. This is the aerial of the subject parcel C zero one zero three three K. You'll notice there is a slight portion that's left out. This portion will be zoned with the office. So this is the portion that's being zoned for the single family. It's currently zoned R two and R three in the regional center character area. And again, the request is rezoned from R two to family residential and R three multifamily residential to R one, single family residential for six single family lots. This is the overall concept plan, the smaller concept plan showing the five lots off of the private access drive and the single lot off of Chambers and Merryweather. These are the architectural images proposed with the presentation. And staff recommends conditional approval with the standard three conditions. Planning Commission also recommends approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
I want to hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering Consultants, thirty-six fifty-one Mars Hill Road, representing Dr. Tom and Michelle McCormick tonight. And I have just a few slides I'd like to show you. If we can get some batteries up. All right. So this property is part of the Jennings Mill Plan Development that I think I was in high school when Jennings Mill was, was first introduced, if I remember correctly, sometime in the eighties, I believe. This, this is, so when, when I was first approached by my client, I went to sorry, I don't think this is working. We're off to a good start. All right. I'm just going to deal with this one here. So I went to guys, Herring's office and said, can you kind of fill me in on the history of Jennings Mill? Because my client wants to rezone this, this, this property. And so what you see here, if it looks confusing, it, it is because it is confusing. It was, it was really hard to track down kind of the, the history of it. And what I would tell you through my presentation on the next few slides, this, this pond here is a good reference point. Merryweather Drive kind of wraps around here. What used to be what is Chambers Court actually right now comes right down through here in that, that red dashed line is where Chambers Court tees into Merryweather Drive. And so the property that we're wanting to rezone this evening is essentially this property in, in this area. And as Guy Herring mentioned, this is a, this is existing. What's there now? The red, the red outline part is the, the area that we're trying to get rezoned tonight. This is a zoning map of the area. And as you can see, this, the property is zoned, has a split zoning. R two and R three, the darker blue is the, is the R three. And again, here is that the existing pond. Chambers Court comes here and then Merryweather wraps around, wraps around here. This is our site plan. So what, what the, the property owners would like to do is go from a R two and R three rezoning to an R one rezoning. So I want to make it clear that right now the property is owned for two family and multifamily residential. What we're asking to do is go from that to a single family R one zoning designation. So in a, it's in essence, we're dropping back and dropping down to what we feel is more appropriate for this area. And there would be one private access drive off of Merryweather Drive that you would access five properties here. And these properties range in size from acre and a half to six. I think this one is about almost seven acres here. So they are large lots. They do fit in very well with, with the Jennings Mill development. There is another remnant lot. When, when Chambers Court was installed here, this left a, a lot, kind of a remnant lot there that, that is included in this. So there's a total of six lots. But there's five lots here. Just going to access the access drive. There is no access going all the way to Jennings Mill. It'll just be this one curve cut with five, with five houses. And that's, that's all I have. Again, I just want to stress that we are wanting to go from a multifamily designation to a single family designation. The houses will be real similar to what's in Jennings Mill now. Those, those representative photos were actually pictures taken of houses in Jennings Mill. So they want to fit into the community and I think it'll be a great, a, a great area for, for this. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak for the reason? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezone P twenty-two zero three one seven Chambers Family Partnership. Rezoning from R two, R three to R one, eighteen point nine eight acres, ten thirty Chambers Court under about three conditions. Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to prove reason request P twenty-two dash zero three one seven with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is reason request P twenty-three dash zero four six Chambers Family Partnership. Rezoning from AG to R two, or AG and R two to OIP, six point three five acres at thirteen ninety-one Jennings Mill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, P twenty-three zero zero four six Chambers Family Partnership LLP. This is the portion we previously looked at, a portion of parcel C zero one zero three three K and C zero one three three A. They're currently zoned AG and R two in the regional center character area. And again, the request is reason parcel C zero one zero three three A, which is owned AG and a portion of parcel C zero one zero three three K zoned R two to OIP zoning for an office development along Jennings Mill Road. This is the concept plan of the office complex showing access on Jennings Mill Road. And these are the architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Number four, to be in keeping with surrounding office developments, pitched hip roofs shall be incorporated on each building. And number five, a traffic impact analysis shall be submitted to the county for review and recommendations shall be incorporated into the preliminary site plan and construction plan set. The planning commission recommends approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
I have a few, well, let me say Jeff Carter, Carter Engineering Consultants, representing Dr. And Mrs. Michelle McCormick. So this is the same ownership group. I will say that they, they have a medical practice here in O'Conie County now. And they're wanting to build this, this office park that we're talking about tonight. So we'll be owner, owner occupied. If you can take a look at the screen here. And I'm just, I guess I need some training on this clicker here. It's not working out too well.
Do what?
Okay. All right. Let's go, let's go back one side, please. So as I stated in the previous case, the red dashed is, the red dashed area is what was previously rezoned to the R one. The green designation just simply shows the property that we're, that we're discussing right now, which is what we want to go with to OIP. This is a zoning map and all the surrounding properties. So the property immediately to the south is currently zoned OIP. That's the, the purple. The property to the north is currently a daycare center. So it is considered commercial, commercial use. And then of course, the property behind us is office. So there, there are existing offices that front Merryweather, Merryweather Drive. And this is the site plan that, that we just, just looked at. Just as a reminder, the yellow is the single family residential. The office complex is down here on, on the left. There will be no access from the office development to the residential or to Merryweather Drive. And so the only access to this office development will be off of Jennings Mill, Jennings Mill Road. There, I will say that this development, since it is owner occupied from day one. My client came to me and said, we don't want this to be a maxed out. We're not in this necessarily for the investment. We don't, we're not going to be, we're not from out of town trying to build these offices and we want this to be a nice area. And if you can look in the middle, this, this area here is a, is a really large open space. There's a little roundabout here. And so they're adding a lot of amenities in, in the site plan that they, that they really want to. So they really want to convey that they are going to be there. This is their office, this will be their office, they're looking at one of these in, in the first phase. And so this will be a, I thought, we think a really quality development for, for the county. So as far as the conditions go. We are. Satisfied with all the conditions, we do have a lot of concern about recommendation number four. And the reason is because looking around. I wouldn't say these days, a lot of the offices that are surround this were built. In the, in the nineties and. A lot of offices that you see that's been built in previous years, you look at it and it's, it's all roof. I mean, it's a lot of roof, looks like a house. Which some people may like that. I think the, the, the maybe a tried and true method perhaps is having more of a flat roof and not having the, a roof that when you look at the building, it, you know, seems to be all, all roof lined. So again, this is an owner occupied property. They, they're going to be there day in and day out, and they really wanted to have a flat roof. So after the planning commission meeting, we, we've met with Guy Herring a couple of times. The architect has got involved and really took a hard look to try to, try to fit into this pitch tip roof. And I really think we got there. I mean, I, I think it took some work on our part, but I, but I feel like that, that we got to a point where we're, we're okay with the pitch tip roof. We do have an alternate motion that we feel like is very important to us. And I've got it here. Go one more back, please. This is our substitute condition, okay? The first sentence, the first sentence reads exactly like staff had it. To be in keeping with surrounding office developments pitched hip roof shall be incorporated on each building. And what we've done is add mechanical roof wells shall be allowed within the pitched hip roof. And so what does that mean? Well, that means that the HVAC units and some of those things that go outside the building that are not desirable, that look real ugly. We're going to put them on top of the, top of the roof. And we want to put them on top of the roof to kind of get them, and you, you won't be able to see them from the ground. It'll be, it'll be enclosed in the, in, in the roof. And we do have a picture, we can go to the next slide, this is, this is what we're talking about. It is a, it is a pitched hip roof with a mechanical well in the middle. And so in getting with, with Mr. Herring, he suggested that we add that as, as part of the condition. All the buildings will have this. It'll look great. And I feel like this meets the intent. But again, staff felt like we needed to kind of bring that up. It's, it's very, very important for the, for the, for, for my client, just because I want to have this very clean looking office development. And we feel like we meet that. So if you would please consider that, that condition as we have amended it, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone, anyone else wish to speak for this reason? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
That, that, Mr. Herring, does that meet?
Yes, sir, I believe it does, because from, as a visual standpoint, it will appear to be a pitched roof. And, and the well will allow them to meet their mechanical needs. So staff is okay with that change in that condition.
Will entertain a motion for this.
I make a motion to approve rezon P twenty three zero zero four seven Chambers Family Partnership. Rezoning from AG R two to OIP, six point three five acres, thirteen ninety one Jennings Mill Road. With the five conditions and adding with additional mechanical well roof to number four.
So we have a motion and a second to prove reason request P twenty three dash zero zero four six with five conditions. Number four altered as suggested by the African. Any discussion?
I got one, one clarification on our document here in front of us and I added, it says seventeen. And then on the paper it says, boy, I mean. Yeah, I think it was one number off. As long as.
Seventeen wasn't.
Yeah, okay, four six.
Yeah, good, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Your next item is rezon number P twenty three dash zero zero seven three. Stephen Lamar and David Hale rezoning from AR to OIP, it's three point zero five acres at twenty five twenty one Mars Hill Road. There's also two variances. Variance number P twenty three dash zero zero seven four. And variance P twenty three dash zero zero seven five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is rezon P twenty three zero zero seven three Stephen Hale owner. This is located at Hollow Creek Lane and Mars Hill Road. C zero one zero four. Five four D, sorry. It's currently zoned AR. In the regional center character area. And again, the request is reason from AR to OIP zoning for a dental office along Mars Hill Road. This is the concept plan you have in your application packets. Slightly larger version. The architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. The planning commission recommended denial.
Now we're here from the owner of the agent of the owner.
Evening Commissioners. My name is Dakota Carruthers. It's very nice to be here tonight, I'm with Parker Poe. And I am representing Brent and Mary Lynn Nail of Athens, Oconee Dentistry. They're here with us tonight. If you take a look at this map behind you. The property to the north. This is their existing dental office location on Virgil Langford Road. This property to the south, this is the property in discussion tonight. And unfortunately Brent and Mary Lynn Nail are having to look at this new property because their existing location is being taken as a result of a G dot road project. So Brent and Mary Lynn started looking around at properties and did all the right things. They went to staff, they looked at all of the materials and ultimately loved this property that they found. But before that. Before that, they wanted to make sure, before we applied, they wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was okay with this use and could really have input on the site plan. So they actually held two open house meetings at their existing dental office location. And they were able to get two folks to show up and had some questions and comments there. And then they held even a second open house meeting after that. And were able to have one attendee who was actually in favor of the project. So that was really nice to see. And then going forward. And I'll first point out, Guy went over this, but this is the AR district and we are requesting an OIP zoning here. And you can see the surrounding zonings here on the map. But when Brent and Mary Lynn spoke to Guy in the staff and looked at all the materials. The future development map was, of course, one of the first things that they looked at. This is the regional center of character area. And one of the first listed uses for primary land uses in this area is medical and professional offices. So of course we were very excited to see that. And then furthermore, we found that we are in the Marshall overlay district. We researched this district and really looked into it and read the language of it. And found that it is intended for a, a mix of uses, but really has an emphasis and a focus on. The transitional uses, the types and intensity of uses and their placement in proximity with one another. And so you can see that what it aims to do is have, you know, a higher density. More of a regional commercial development along the Oconee Connector. And then radiating out from that, you're going to have lighter intensity neighborhood service, commercial uses. And then residential coming off of that, which is what you want from an overlay, that's what you want in the future development map. And that's what you see here. Part of why we think that this is a great transitional piece for this property specifically. Is the type of use that it is, this is an office, this has normal business hours. They are not going to be operating at night or on weekends. Any other commercial use that you would see to change this property would be a retail or restaurant. Hotel, any of those uses that are listed down here as a primary land use. Most anything else is going to be a bit more intensive and have a bit more impact on the neighbors here. So we really feel like this is a true transitional piece and something that really fits well with this property. We went to the planning commission meeting, we of course appreciated the input from staff and the recommendation of approval. But we went to the planning commission meeting and had some really great discussion and we heard from several parties on both sides. And we understand, we fully understand the. How, how difficult it is for a property to transition from residential to commercial. That's a hard thing, but we would. I, I would invite you to understand that it seems as though this, this hard decision has already been made. I understand it from Guy that for the future development map in the comp plan, there were multiple, there was a lot of public outreach, multiple public input meetings. A public hearing, this was widely publicized. And then again, with the Marshall overlay district. Where both of these things are listing this property and the ones next door. As transitioning over to light commercial. So we feel when Brent and Mary Lynn and, and any other commercial user would look at these properties, they would see this as being. An invited welcomed commercial use. There's also, I want to point out on the smaller map categories within the Marshall overlay district. Our property is here in pink outlined and this is the future development opportunity category. Which is rezoning for commercial or office uses that might be appropriate in that pink shaded area. Another category is in yellow and those are the residential preservation areas. But when all of this very, very hard work was done, looking specifically at these properties. This property was identified as one that could potentially be commercial for a, a light, well done transitional use like Britain Mary Lynn would like to do. And it, it was not chosen to be one of those that was identified as a residential. A piece to say residentially. I also want to point out there were some comments and, and concerns about the, you know, maybe a domino effect of commercial in the area and further back into the residential. But we believe by sticking to this map, even if a decision was for approval here, you, you've already got the boundary line set up. Properly as you want them, it would not create any precedent for anything further. It would be what's already designated in, in both of these maps. And I'll go back to here and they're kind of outlined in the same way on these maps. So the nails used. These maps along with the ordinances, along with other materials from the county to identify this property. We would assume that if the nails could not. It was unfortunate enough that the nails could not put their business here. We would be getting, you all would be getting multiple and multiple requests over and over for commercial at this property. Just by looking at this and seeing what the property is transitioning to. But if approved, we have outlined here, we have a site plan that was done by our engineer. That was submitted with the application and the site plan shows everything we intend on doing to conform with the Mars Hill overlay as well as the underlying. OIP zoning that includes the buffer areas against the residential that would stay. The landscape strip, the sidewalks, all of those items. In addition to that, we are lucky enough to be, to have real life images of what the property would look like, which again. Brent and Mary Lynn put their heart and soul into this building. It was just built five years ago, they love it, they don't want it to change, they want something similar. This also is in line with what the Marshall overlay architectural requirements already demand. And we would tonight ask for your approval. But I also want to mention that Brent and Mary Lynn kind of went to the liberty of having a petition at their dental office and explaining this process. To anybody who would listen, they actually got over three hundred signatures on a petition in favor of this. And I know several of them, you know, felt the need to reach out to all of you by email. And I believe we have some of them here tonight. That is for the rezoning request, we do have two variance requests that go along with this. Two items, these are access.
We'll take care of those and just.
I was just going to list them and then say maybe we'll get to them later, okay? So we'll do those later. This is just for the request, we do in addition to the nails have Elizabeth Story here with us tonight and she is with Parker Poe and she deals with the. Process working with G dot on the condemnation side, if you all have any questions about the timeline. And then we also have Richard Breedlove here, he is the engineer that made the site plan for any technical questions. That is it, thank you so much.
Thank you. You have ten fifty two left, do you want to reserve any of that for rebuttal? How much, how much you want to hold? All of it, okay. Very good. And then we'll move to those speaking. Against, Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, y'all. I'm not as eloquent as the young lady from Atlanta, but. I would like to start by saying that I feel for Doc Nell and his wife from being put in the situation by the DOT, it's, it's not good. I would also like to acknowledge that they did reach out to the community at the beginning of this process, are very open about their intentions and I do appreciate that. That said, I've gone back and forth about this reason and I've tried to get on board with it. But at the end of the day, it comes down to the fact that they're asking for a reason of a property that would include the destruction of an existing home. I could understand if there was no other property close by that is suited for this kind of business, but there is and some of it's just been rezoned recently. Likewise, I could understand if the property owner could not find a buyer for the house. But in our neighborhood, just a quarter of a mile from that property, a neighbor of ours just sold their house even before it was listed, such as the demand for residential property in the area. All right, this, this reason request is not simply a reason of an empty property from R one to a commercial includes the destruction of a house. Which is by no means blighted, it's one of the nicer properties in the area. As well as a variance for, and you've had that later for parking entry and for residential street which serves as the only entry and exit point of the whole neighborhood. Yeah, a lot of us do believe that this could lead to a domino effect where more and more houses are torn down to make way for commercial properties. And, you know, given all that, I just don't believe that this is a good land use at this time for this property. And I would respectfully request that you deny this reason.
Thank you. Chris Ward?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. They took the, all the trees and put them in a tree museum. And they charged people a dollar and a half just to see them. And they charged people a dollar and a half just to see them. The 2002, the counting crows released a cover of Joni Mitchell's 1970s hit Big Yellow Taxi. When that hit was re-released, I was just a kid. And I was able to somewhat safely navigate the Mars Hill corridor on my bicycle. My friends and I, we would regularly walk or bike to one another's homes in that area. Or go to a nearby Golden Pantry to get a Red Bull to supercharge our adventures. Yes, we had internet when I grew up. We had gaming systems. But we also still had fun outside. Today, the kids growing up in that area cannot possibly have the same experience that my friends and I had because of the free for all development that's being described here. Kids are not free to roam around due to the large volume of high speed traffic that's being invited into that area. I've personally watched friends and neighbors struggle to make the trip to check their mail safely. My concerns about pedestrian safety in this area are not merely hypothetical. My pediatrician, Dr. Stephen Floyd, was killed in 2005 when he was hit by a car. Elderly Mamie Daniel was hit and killed by a car in 2006 while she was checking her mail. My dear friend David Gilstrap was killed in 2008 when he was struck by a car. In Oconee County, we've continued to see more pedestrian related fatalities than should be our fair share, largely attributable to high volume, high speed traffic in residential areas. Development of further commercial areas and existing residential zones will only exacerbate this issue. While I'm sympathetic to our opponent's point that this is some master plan. I think we should really look deep into whether we should stick with that master plan. There are some economic questions too. As the gentleman who just spoke mentioned, the nation is facing a housing crisis and petitioners, they want to tear down a house and replace it with a dentist office. That's going to continue to price out would be home buyers as someone who's trying to do that right now. I can tell you that according to Redfin, housing prices are up 8.8% in 30677 this year. The median home price is 598,000, 598,700 in 2023. Just in 2019, the median home price was only 385,900. That's according to the Atlanta Journal Constitution. That's an increase of 212,8000 or 55.14% in four years. Homes are selling in this zip code in approximately 28 days, or anecdotally, as we heard, before they're even listed on the market. Commercial medical space is available within one mile at about $24 a square foot per year and as low as $17.50 per square foot per year within three miles of the location proposed. It would not place an undue burden on the petitioners to ask them to sell the existing home or use the money, the proceeds from the sale at fair market value to fund and underwrite the cost of using an existing commercial space, such as one that you guys approved just a few minutes ago. For those reasons, I respectfully request that the board deny the petitioner's request for rezon. I thank you.
Thank you. Michael Costello.
Good evening. I'm relatively new to the area. We bought a house about a year, year and a half ago. And I am on the next road over to Andrea Drive. So I know some of my neighbors have been here before for other things going on. That area is really under the keen eye of developers and it concerns me with this petition to rezone. I do not see it as being necessary to rezone. You know, you take these residential areas and start turning them commercial, you do create a precedent. What stops the next dental officer, next orthopedic office from coming to the lot right next to me and saying, well, you know, it's part of the plan. It's only one lot. It's only one. At some point, we need to kind of stick with the zone. And I'm here to give the voice. I know it's not the biggest neighborhood, not street, but it's still a neighborhood. And when I bought that house, I bought that house, the only concern I had, you can imagine buying a house last year, it was crazy. We were ready to go, ready to sign. The only concern I had was the undeveloped area around us and tried to research a little more, more. And the one thing that gave me some comfort was knowing the lots closest to me still were residential. That my kids would grow up safely. I wouldn't have to worry about that. So right now I stand here as someone who lives in that area realizes what a traffic nightmare can be, but likes that area, likes the fact that it feels like home. To their credit, they did reach out and I appreciate it. And I, it looks like a great practice and I hope they can find their home. I mean, they have wonderful reviews and it seems like they want to treat their patients like they're at home, but I just can't stand here and not say something that, I mean, these lots should not be taken from their intended purpose so that we can continue with more office and commercial area in a seemingly residential. So again, I support the people who are against this and would ask for that consideration.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone partially wanting to speak against?
Yes.
Anyone else here speaking against? Yes, sir.
My name, my name is Ronald Carey and my house is the first house on the right. When you enter Mars Hill Road, I strongly object to this. I mean, it is a residential neighborhood. There's a residential house there. It's a small, I mean, it's not that big a lot. I mean, I don't understand how they're going to be able to put a dentist office there and have parking for. And, and then to the additional traffic, and I strongly, strongly object to them having an entrance to it from Mars Hill Road. I mean, if they, if you do approve it, then they should have the entrance off Mars Hill Road, not from within a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Same, sure. When I spoke last time, folks down here about the same subdivision, pocket subdivision, folks like the neighborhood, they like the environment. We can't see where there's any need to tear down a house when we have a house. We've got four homes in the neighborhood right now being remodeled in a real high level. People like where they live. An entrance and exit is difficult to get in and out of as it is. We don't have anything against dentists or businesses. But there are a lot of real estate in the area with access to that could be used for what this proposal wants to do. But Oak Ridge subdivision has only that exit that is a clear exit out of there. We have school buses come even in the summertime. They can barely get in and out of as it is. And if we have anybody parking on our residential street at all, including standing traffic, you simply can't navigate the neighborhood. And there are a lot of children in there. So this residence, I've been in it for 45 years. It's a real comfortable spot for me. It's tripled, quadrupled in value along with the taxes on it. I like to stay there, but I don't want to ride out onto Mars Hill, which is an overloaded throughfare. Mars Hill is an overloaded throughfare. The traffic travels from Mars Hill Church, which I love, downhill too fast to get to the intersection down at the Oconee Connector. They do it for a variety of reasons. There's a lot of property on Mars Hill all the way back to 78. They're still available for development. And there are some lots that are beautiful and residential. This county, you folks are going to have to redress, take a look at what kind of load is on Mars Hill before we add a business that will have 29 parking spaces, in and out traffic, sharing an exit for the neighborhood. Over and over again, people have pointed out the problem of doing that. If you just spent one day down there, and a matter of fact, no offense, but the six signs that are down on the corner made it difficult to go right, read the traffic coming up from Oak County connector. If you're not, if you're not going right, then you can't get out down the road right now just because of the advertising signs. That's how congested it is. So I appreciate your time and energy. And I agree with everybody's vote for a on this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have a 10 minute rebuttal time?
All right. I took some notes down and I'm going to try to answer some of these comments and questions the best I can. And this is, these are comments similar to what we've heard at planning commission and things that are understood. We understand that neighbors care deeply about their, their property and their neighbors and what's going to happen around them. I did hear a comment about all of the development going on and, and being too much development, not like it, it was before when you were a kid and that is the result of you guys being a popular place to live. But I, I do want to point out that this is not a new development. This is a replacement. This is less than a mile down the road from the existing property. I mean, I just drove it. Again, I've driven it several times, but it is so close. And so from a wider area, not just the neighborhood, but if you're looking at a wider area, this is for traffic, for one, this is not an impact to the wider area. It is the same patients are going to be going to the same place. They're making a couple of turns and you're right there. And for this existing neighborhood, I did. I did want to look at the map. There is so of the this one. Yes, this is fine. And so from the neighborhood in the back, there are these two entry and exit points onto Marshall Road. And then Marshall Road does come onto the connector, but then in the back, which is kind of off the map that you can't see, it does roll back around. So there are multiple entry and exit points. I can understand if there's you know, some light distance between.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're not going to do that. She has her opportunity to speak.
So anyways, there, there are these entries and exit points and the reason why, and we'll get to the variance in a minute, but we wanted to make sure that we're safety and weren't stacking up too many cars here on Mars Hill, although the traffic flow is low, Britain Maryland even stood outside for a whole week and counted the amount of cars that were coming in and out because they felt so strongly that the traffic, the trip generation by IT was too high. And all that just goes to say is that this is, this is not in addition, this is not a new development that we're trying to add. This is just a replacement property for something that's already existing in the and then Britain Mary Lynn, I've heard a lot about, why don't you go somewhere else? This was done after a lot of research, a lot of time. And again, this they're in a tough spot here where we are in a very tight timeline with G dot. We're not going to have a lot of time to look for properties and we're given they're concerned. It, it's a scary time having a short window where you're not going to have business and being in negotiations financially and wanting to find a low cost property as much as you can to try to mitigate any losses that you might incur. And also looking at some nearby properties that do look vacant and do look like they could seem to go commercial, even ones that are right here next door on, on Marshall Road are investment properties for future commercial, which are charging a lot higher prices. And that I believe is all I have to say. I think there was a comment about the size of the property and how this would fit there. And if we go back to the site plan, this is about a three acre property. So there is actually a lot of room. If you, if you've driven past there, and I hope you have, there's a lot more room than you think. And the building is actually going to not be much bigger than the home and that's there existing and the parking fits on there just fine, just nicely. Let's see. I, I was hearing and, and I apologize, I was in the back when I came in, just kind of stretching my legs and I've been able to hear the earlier votes of the night, but at least at planning commission, I think the same one was on agenda. There was an item for reducing density for homes because there's a concern about in addition of homes to the community and how schools would handle more housing. So, so I want to be mindful of of those votes versus a, a vote because we are concerned to remove residential. That's, that's all I've got. And we, again, we, we really would hope that you guys take into the consideration, the map that you have and future requests that you might get based on the future development map, the Mars Hill overlay. And again, Britain Maryland can answer any questions and I, I'm sure all of us would, would like a chance to, to make sure you guys are, are clear before you take a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Herring, I've got a question about the, there was a comment and maybe a, a question about why the driveway cannot go on Mars Hill. So can you address that?
I can. I think that'd probably be more appropriate at the variant stage, but, but, but the, the issue comes into the two existing streets that are there. And the code would require a separation distance that could not be met at that location.
Thank you.
Any other question? Hey, we're entertaining a motion for rezon P 23 dash 0073.
I make a motion to deny. P 23 to 0073, Stephen Martin, David Hill, Arizona, from AR to OIP, 3.5 acres, 2521 Marshall Road, Singapore residence.
Yeah, a motion is second to deny rezon request P 23 dash 0073. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. With that, both variants requests are now null. Is that right? Guys, you're good with that? Okay, our next item is various request P 23 dash 0076. This is Etchbridge Parkway LLC Rib Rehabilitation Hospital, 8.78 acres at 1083 Parkway Boulevard, currently undeveloped.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is various P 23 0076, Etchbridge Parkway LLC. The parcel is C 01Z 007. Along Parkway Boulevard is currently on B2 in the regional center character area. And the property owner is requesting a variance from UDC section 30605 to allow for offsite modular components of the proposed building to be constructed onsite using the blocks, the construction system. And this is the concept plan. You have your application packets and the images that were submitted with the, with the variance, showing the different modules. They're being proposed to be constructed offsite and assembled onsite. And then these are the architectural images that were submitted with the application. The same that were submitted with the reason. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one condition. Like.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering. We are representing in Compass Health. You saw this project back in December and approved the zoning. What we're asking for this evening is a special exception variance to allow for the offsite modular components to be used to construct the proposed medical facility building. I have with me this evening, Miss Amanda Moore. She's with Blocks, the maker of the modular units. Let her present. She has a short presentation. And maybe she'll be able to answer any questions you may have also. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Moore. I'm with Blocks. This project, as Justin said, has already been zoned appropriately and the CON has been approved. So the project is not what's in question. It's just the methods by which they will build the project. It's probably worth saying that the project will look like this. Whether it is built with modules or whether it is built traditionally. It is the design was, is been a long time in development by Encompass Health. They have several such facilities throughout Georgia, throughout the United States. When we came on board, we When we came on board, we are working to help them achieve their goals a little bit faster, a little bit more consistent in quality, a little bit more reliable in that way, and and a little bit more hopefully affordable. It's, it's our methods to build what they had already designed. So it didn't change into a series of, uh, the fear is always that it's a series of trailers that are going to show up on a site, right? Um, and and this should not look like that. If you go through the slides real quick, there's not, aren't a lot. You can go past that one. We've already seen it, but that's the floor plan. Okay. Um, so this is the floor plan. The gray section on the left would be phase two. So we're really only, and that could be years. We're really only looking at the blue portion for the initial build, which is a forty bed inpatient physical medical rehabilitation hospital for folks who have broken hip or had a knee replacement or need to relearn how to go about their daily lives. It's all inpatient. Um, so each of these yellow boxes would be a module and each of the modules is built as large as it can be to still go down the highway and abide by ODOT rules. So this is an example of one of the modules. Each module has as much in it that is completely finished as possible. So the one that you would be looking at here has the bathroom in it. It's got the interior partitions in it. Those bathrooms have tile on the floor. They have paint on the walls. There are toilets and sinks and pipes and conduit and light fixtures, doors, all of the things that would normally take place on a job site, as long as they would travel well. Ceiling tiles, as an example, don't really travel well. So those would show up onsite. This is our factory. Um, you can see the modules in their starting place, and then it goes to a steel frame. As it moves down a little further, you can see those bathroom units on it. This one has a subfloor on it and the roof is already framed up and installed. This one has the exterior walls. You can see it either end there and then the interior partitions as well. They're extra sturdy, extra stiff because they have to be picked up and put down and put on a truck and drive all the way across the country sometimes to get to where they're going. Uh, if you look here at this one, I don't know if I have a laser pointer. Nope. Okay. If you look in the middle section where there's a, you know, a worker, a gentleman coming toward us through the, what would be a hallway there. Up above him, there's some blue and there's some silver, and that is the mechanical, electrical plumbing main lines that would run through overhead in a corridor. We build those on racks as well. So um these look like fighter planes, but they're in fact ductwork and piping and conduit and all the main lines for everything from sprinklers to water to electricity and air that are all made the same every time, as compact as they can be to fit up in that ceiling. If any of you have ever watched or had to be part of the installation of that in a typical way, it's overhead, it's on ladders, it's not particularly ergonomic, it can be a little bit dangerous. We're able to do that in a controlled environment. So when these show up, they get lined up side by side, and then the, what we call the stitch work begins onsite. Everything that happens in the factory that would be closed construction when it arrives gets inspected in the factory by Georgia approved inspection agencies. We use N T A. And then the stitch work, which is all the connections that happen in the field are inspected by local inspection teams, just like they would be for anything else that is built and can connected in the field. Uh, this is just a rendering of of the project. Once all the units are put together. And again, this is what it would look like. And the idea is, uh, the way it's designed is that you won't be able to tell. You can't tell that that was built any differently than any other encompass facility or other hospital that you may encounter. It's all finished out with all the same materials that you would use if you built it traditionally using largely the same methods, just in a different location before it comes to the site. There's some more interior shots. If you're interested, we do have a short video of an installation on a different job site. This particular one was in Texas, but we have used this methodology for for projects in Georgia, in various cities. Um, I think we have eight projects in Georgia right now. Um, there are a couple of projects in Georgia for encompass health where we haven't used, we call these Uber modules because they are as big as they could be, and also because our bosses married to a German woman and he likes to insert that sometimes. But we call them Uber modules. They're the largest that can still travel. We have a few projects in Georgia now for encompass health that have smaller modules inside of them, just bathroom pods and headwalls. And then this would be first in Georgia using the large components for this particular client. But we have used them for other clients. That's it. Are there any questions?
Not at this time. Anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close a public comment. Any questions from commissioners?
Ma'am, if you could come back up again, I've got a question for you. When you're saying that you're stitching all this together, and I'm assuming that you've got some type of a mechanical fan that's going to be blowing the air through the facilities. So are you, as a manufacturer, doing the air balance testing on those, or is that done on site by some other engineer?
It's onsite by a third party, um, because it can't really be tested well until it's all connected together. But yes, that we do do commissioning as well. It's a third party.
Okay. And the electrical, I assume it would be the same way. You would have a third party person that would do the testing for the hospital labs and that type of thing.
That's right. So we do test each module before it leaves to make sure that the module itself, the light fixtures, those things are working. But you can't really test the whole system until it's a whole system. And so that part happens again on the job site.
Okay. And then I noticed you had a, one of your modules was drywall. And I saw the tarts over the top of that. So will these units have the drywall already installed or will that be installed on site?
They will have, um, each unit has a lot of drywall in it, right? Every partition and everything is already drywalled, already painted uh when it arrives. But as the modules go together, you can imagine a long cord or there are patch patches that have to happen in between each module to make that a complete wall. So some happens on the job site. Most of it happens in the factory and we use paperless, mold resistant products for that reason.
Where's the actual baby bag?
Just outside of Birmingham, I'm investing there, Alabama. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're entertaining a motion.
I make a motion to approve variance P twenty-three zero zero seven six, that's pretty far away. LLC rehabilitation hospital, eight point seven acres, ten eighty-three Parkway Boulevard, with one condition.
A motion is second, approved variance request P twenty-three zero zero seven six with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is text amendments to the Unified Development Code, Articles two, three, six, and thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, uh, prior discussion back in January. And in accordance with the action taken by the Georgia's legislature in their twenty twenty-two session, staff has identified in the UDC sections that are required amendment to redirect administrative decisions to the B O C and thus achieve compliance with House Bill fourteen oh five prior to the July one, twenty twenty-three deadline. You have the amendments to Articles two, three, and six, and thirteen in your packet, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for commissioners?
I got a couple. Yeah, it seems like that this is your get out of jail free car.
I didn't ask for it. This was the legislature that determined these, these changes.
Question I have for all of these. Now that you've been administered with being able to get parents is, what's the process now? Will they go Jeff Carter become a planning commission, then come to the board of commissioners?
No, it'll just be through our regular variance process, just like the two or the one we just heard. So it would only come to you guys. The the planning commission doesn't hear variance.
Okay. Okay. But will they have to hire our professional?
They'll have to write the same type of applications. Yes, the the we do with standard variances. They're, they're, they're much simpler on the administrative side, and those will be more arduous. That's correct.
All right. And my next question is a homeowner who's asking for variance, they will have to post the necessary, or we will have to post the necessary signs.
That's right.
And so how long will that have to be advertised?
Uh, that that same time period. So ours is about a two month time period from the beginning of the acceptance of an application to where you guys would hear it. So roughly three to four weeks of advertising.
So currently that will add too much to anybody's project.
Yes.
If they wanted to build a swimming pool.
Yes, that's right.
And needed a variance, it would take them two months instead of just going down and seeing Guy here.
That's right. There is an application process now that would take us a little bit of time, but that's correct. It's, it's much abbreviated.
The, 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 the point, though, that probably ought to be made is it doesn't matter. It we had to do something that was going to add two months to it because of the legislature. So it was either going to be a process that involved Guy or it was going to be a process that involved y'all. But either way, we'd had to do the same process. So it's not, this doesn't add two months. What the legislature did added the two months. You follow me?
Yeah, I follow. I've, I've I know. I just want to make a point.
And, and if we, if we left it with Guy, then they would have had the right to appeal it to the board also. And you go through the, so could I add it six months?
So what's the current status? If somebody doesn't like his decision, is there an appeal process?
He did. He makes such good decisions that we've hardly ever had that happen. Uh, but yes, yes, yes. Yeah. You would appeal it to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. And is there a process for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any, any decision that Guy makes is appealable to the board under the administrative part of the U D C.
Is there a statute of limitations on that?
Thirty days.
There is thirty, thirty days.
It just doesn't have much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for commissioners? Do we have any public comment on these changes? Anyone virtually? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the technicals, the unified development code, articles two, three, six, and thirteen, estimate.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is a public hearing on old Jenny's Mill Road. Jenny's Mill Road is our Jenny's Mill Extension, Research Parkway, right away.
This one is, uh, we've, we've looked at it over the past couple of years, and it basically involves relocation of roads within a development that Tim Burgess is doing. And um, the gist of this is we are agreeing, we will abandon the parts of those roads that are no longer needed once the new road is constructed, contingent upon the new road being constructed. And what you would do after the public hearing is approve the abandonment resolution and the accompanying agreement. We've worked through this with the developers' attorneys. Kind of fortunately, Bill Berryman had done something similar to this when he was in Clark County, and we were able to kind of piggyback on some of that. It makes sense and it's the, um, it's, it's a sensible way to approach how a development takes place when you're relocating roads.
Any questions for Daniel on that? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the abandonment resolution and to approve the accompanying agreement. So move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion is second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is discuss and consider the public defender F Y twenty-four intelligent defense services agreement for the period July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. This is our annual agreement with public defender. Got to us a little early, so we're able to go ahead and get it done before July first. This does match our budgeted number that was for the budget that was just approved. So we're asked any questions about, if you have any. Okay. Any public comment on this? Anyone virtually? Thank you. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the public defender F Y twenty-four intelligent defense service agreement for the period of one July twenty-three to June thirty of twenty-four.
And a motion is second for approval of agreement. Any discussions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is consider appointments to the Oak County Animal Services Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to recommend the following three appointments. The animal services beginning July one of this year, expiring June the period for twenty-five. Skelsey Fox, Benji Shaw, Melody Brooks.
We have a second.
Second. Sorry.
Very good. I already have a motion and a second for the performance to the Animal Services Board. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is a center performance to the Keepo County Beautiful Commission.
Would like to recommend the appointment of Catherine Russell, Ryan McNeil, Garrett Mack, Gerald Lee Mordenway, William Blanchetti for the period of beginning seven one twenty-three and expiring six thirty twenty-five. Second.
Okay, our motion is second. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is consider performance to the Family and Children's Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Bruce to that position for a form of beginning seven one twenty twenty-three expire six thirty twenty, twenty-eight.
Yeah, we motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is consider appointments to the Tourism and Visitors Bureau.
All right, Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint the following four individuals, Stephanie Van Dyke, I believe, Amber McCall, Deech, Casey Deming, and Deisha Hagwood. I apologize if I slay the names of these good people.
A second.
Here, a motion is second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. This next one might take a minute. We have confirmation of the Water Resources Director. Do you want to talk that one through?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Adam Layfield has been serving as the Acting Director of Water Resources for approximately six months. I prepared approximately a ten-page dissertation talking about Adam. But inconceitively, his wishes, uh, he's, he's a humble, hardworking guy who's done an outstanding job, very dedicated to Oak County County. He holds a P E. He's, um, he's made it through six months dealing with people on the management side, and he's still smiling. Uh, and so I would like to ask the board to confirm my decision to appoint Adam Layfield as the Water Resources President Director.
Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Oh, come on, man.
Would you like to say anything, Adam? All right. We're entertaining a motion. Your motion is second, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
Right away. If you've gotten up and starts a speech, we could have changed. I guess we could still change.
Next item will be our third quarter financial update.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, the third quarter financial update presented this evening will present financial funds of March the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And we'll look at some of the major funds of the County County Government, general fund revenue and expenditures, capital, sales tax revenues, and our resources department. Right, so the third quarter amended budget is presented here for you at thirty-nine million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand. Right. So the uh third quarter amended budget is presented here for you at thirty-nine million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, you can see the collected revenues here as well at ninety-nine point one percent collected. Um, I will kind of take you back a year and remind you of our cares ARP funding that was received. Um, came along with some regulations on when we could recognize that revenue. So included in this revenue number is four point eight million of ARP funding that was received in a prior year. Uh, those funds weren't budgeted to be recognized. So when you see ninety-nine point one percent collected, it includes those grant funds. Uh, if those were to be removed, uh, the general fund will be collected still strongly at eighty-seven point one five percent. So we can take a look at those revenues collected by sources here and see the strong collections. Um, most of our seasonal or annual collections by the end of the third quarter have already been collected. So what remains is just um kind of regular recurring items that you would see through the third, fourth quarter. Um, so anything at seventy-five percent um or above um is on track to meet budget with where we're at um budgeted for year end. So you can see all of these categories here are performing strongly. Um, fines and forfeitures, the only line item that's less than seventy-five percent. And then the thirteen thousand percent um is where those grant funds are sitting at four point eight million. So also looking at budgeted expenditures here to actuals, um showing at fifty-six and a half percent spent. Um, we'll take a look at each of the departments individually. Um, but the theme of that fifty-six and a half percent spent not being seventy-five percent spent um has a lot to do with um some projects that are in um the current year that are multiple year projects. So I'm looking at the individual departments. Um, there are a lot of departments that are less than the seventy-five percent spent. So it's kind of scrolling through those uh finance at forty-six percent spent. Uh, finance contains um a budget contingency for inflationary costs for projects that has not been used. Don't anticipate that we will need to use that. Um, if we look at um juvenile court, notice some of those revenues weren't collected yet. They also haven't spent the budgeted um expenditures yet either. A district attorney um has an annual payout of grant fund matching that was done in the fourth quarter. Um, so they are on track as well. In the remaining of the departments here, you'll see some of the more major differences. Um, Public Works and the paving um did start in third quarter, but just barely. Um, so most of the paving that you'll find in the spring is going to be showing in the uh, fourth quarter, um, which would be in kind of the year end update for you. Operations contains um administrative building, um, funding. Um, we are still spending the bond funding, so that budget is still outstanding as well. And public safety at forty-three percent um is budgeted for an annual year end. Um, general fund support of the E nine one one fund that doesn't occur until year end either. Uh, community development um has debt service payments in that. We still have one additional payment um in the fourth quarter prior to year end. So that kind of gives you an overview of where the fifty-six percent spent is. Our capital expenditures. So we looked at the same information on second quarter. So what I'd like to do is just kind of update you on what changed for third quarter. Um, and that would be the IT hardware upgrades. Um, were partially completed in prior, but now have um been entirely completed. And that includes core switch upgrade and a virtual machine host. Um, vehicles, and there's no change as of the second quarter. Um, all of the vehicles that were ordered in um twenty-two and in twenty-three um have been received. Looking at our local option sales tax, um, current year over prior year months is performing strongly. Um, it's a seventeen point nine seven percent increase over prior year. And that's a year to date number through March. Um, to budget, we've collected eighty-five percent. So the budget here is eight point nine million, collected seven million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. You can see the same uh strong growth in the SPOST as well. Um, this is at one hundred and thirty percent of the budget. The budget is six point six million. So just as a reminder, this SPOST is budgeted on what we plan to spend in that year in order to balance the budget. So the budget is less here than what we would have anticipated um collecting. So we could exceed this budget quicker than we will local option sales tax budget. Um, but still seeing the same strong increases here, seventeen point seven um year to date through March. I'm looking at the SPOST projects. The change since the second quarter is the uh Tim Plan Transportation Maintenance Plan for FY twenty-three at two point six million. Um, previously said, you know, to occur in the spring. So that has began um and is continuing in the fourth quarter. Uh, fire equipment purchases um while still showing in process here have been also completed in the fourth quarter. And historic property improvements are currently listed as pending, but I think projects are starting to be identified for that funding and are um in the procurement and moving through that process. Um, so working towards in process on that line item as well. Great. Water Resources revenues for third quarter are at eleven point four million with a budget of sixteen point three million. Uh, so that's sixty-nine point eighty-five percent collected. Um, included in the revenue budget here are transfers from SPOST. So we have three point four million uh budgeted from SPOST for water resources in FY twenty-three. And as of the third quarter, one million of those funds had been transferred and used from SPOST. Um, so that's included in the budget, but not necessarily used. Um, if that item is removed, we can see that the revenues collector is seventy-nine point eight three percent. Uh, so when we're looking at charges for services such as water and sewer sales, um, they are on target, um, if not exceeding it um to collect for the entire FY twenty-three. Third quarter expenses for water resources are at nine point seven million, just twenty-four point twelve percent expended. But here we have some large capital items budgeted, uh, the largest of which is calls creek. So we'll break this down a little bit and just look at the various categories of expenses so that you can kind of see how they're spent on operations as well as capital, um, and some other year end items included there. Um, so you can see the capital's at eight point two two percent. That pulls their total spend um down to twenty-four point twelve. We remove that out. Uh, they're spent at fifty-eight point two nine percent for the third quarter. We also could remove depreciation since that's a year in closing entry um to look at kind of operational expenditures um and brings us back to sixty-four point three one percent. So while the expanding um is a little bit lower than we would expect to see in the third quarter. Um, it's, it's not too far off and it's yeah, it's great if we haven't had all of those repairs that we've had to pay for from the budget. So. And a capital update on Water Resources Department, um changes since we've last looked at this cause creek base two transmission line, uh, it's in the process of acquiring easements at this time. And um the two F one fifties previously um were in process but have been um received and accounted for in third quarter. That is overview for you. If you have any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Melissa? We've got our first distribution. You want to go over that?
Sure. Uh, so it started April first, um, which means that we got the revenue in May. Um, I don't know, quote you wrong, but I'm going to give you an estimate. I want to say eight hundred and ninety thousand. Um, so April is generally a lower collection month and we see that across SPOST and um lost as well. Um, so it came in at about ninety percent of our local option sales tax. Um, ninety percent of our spot, which we would expect it to be less because it doesn't tax on all of the same things. Um, so overall, I think it's a strong collection.
You said it was eight hundred?
It's eight hundred and ninety.
That's long.
I want to check that now because.
Eight fifty-nine, three hundred and thirteen and seventy-five cents.
That's serious.
Yeah.
Super.
So it's a ten, ten to eleven million dollar budget. Wow. Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd motion to approve the consent. Second.
Yeah, motion is second to prove the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
We have no need of executive session. Commissioner sec. Oh, excuse me.
Before we, I, I should have done that earlier during the comments, but uh two things, uh, just want to uh recognize the uh Fort Watson family on the uh recent passing of Fort Watson, who was a previous commissioner of those uh county, uh city commissioner and also on planning commission. They served many years in playoffs. So uh, want to just send out our condolences to the Watson family. And also not, not as somber as the passing of Fort Watson, but insists us tonight a somber occasion. This is the last time we will have our meeting here, regular meeting in this building.
No, not. No.
Just checking.
Just checking.
One more regular. All right.
We're getting close though.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we're adjourned.